Good evening and welcome to this Town Hall in regards to our beloved institution of St. James that has existed in this community for over 125 years. There's been a number of Town Hall meetings over the course of the last year or so, some upbeat, some contentious. I'm happy to report that, you know, we had signs all over town there that said, "Save our Hospital." I think tonight you'll learn that those signs can come down and be replaced with "Support our Hospital." I think so many people have done so many great things and we've had so many people working together to ensure that quality of health care delivery system in this community would continue today and into the future. And there's been a lot of people from the Board of Directors, the Administration, and you'll hear from some of our partners from the University of Rochester who, you know, have come down here and boots on the ground and helping turn this institution around. So it's...tonight you'll hear from two people here on the stage, one of those being Dr. Ray Mieszewski, who is the Chief Medical Officer to Highland and Strong. He also is a practicing physician. So he's here now as Acting Chief Medical Officer for St. James. He doesn't have enough to do, do you, Ray? Yeah, but he's here, he's been very, very instrumental, very supportive, and the medical staff is rallying around Ray, and he's rallied around them, and things are moving in a very positive direction. There's a lot that's going on here, there's been a lot of, a lot of technical, legal things that had to go on. I won't even begin to tell you about those things because you're really more concerned and interested in the future of the hospital. But I'm telling you, the leadership of the Board and the Administration has been stellar, and it's my duty this evening and honor to introduce a young woman who has worked tirelessly on behalf of this community and this institution. And I know sometimes she, you know, she has to, in the leadership position, you get the slings and arrows and you have targets on your back, but don't think for one minute that your efforts have not been appreciated. And having been in the political arena for over 30 years, I know people don't always agree, but it's important that we get to, we come together and support this hospital. And I'm sure you'll find the future of St. James is bright. There's a lot of work to do, and it will be done. And without further ado, I will introduce Jen Salda.
Welcome to our Town Hall meeting, and on behalf of St. James Mercy Hospital Board and Administration, I'd like to let you know that we have made a ton of progress towards achieving sustainable health care in Hornell. And wanted to start out by talking about some of the regional providers that are actually coming to town to help us continue providing vital services here. So if I could recognize those who are with us this evening before I get started with the slide deck, I truly appreciate it. So the first one is Jane Fife, and she is here from Loyola Recovery Foundation, and they'll be taking care of addiction services. Jim Cummings, CEO from Oak Orchard Community Health Center. We have Anna Foy here from Elderwood, Post-Acute Partners, skilled nursing facility on sale. Sue Weber from Fresenius. Sue, that's for dialysis. Steve Goldstein, CEO from Strong is over here. Amy Pollard, President and CEO from NOISE. And Jay Maslin, the CEO from RCFO from NOISE, is next to her. Julie Hart from Jones, thank you for coming. Allison Hunt from Congressman Reed's office is up here up front. We have Tony, or Tammy Peppin, from Phil Palmasano's office, Assemblyman, there she is, thank you for coming. And then, of course, Dr. Mayewski from, from the university is up here, our interim Chief Medical Officer. Dr. Pilcher, the whole medical staff from St. James, we have many employees and board members, thank you all for coming, appreciate it. So with that, I think it's important to know, and that introduction was to let you know there are so many providers in the region, working with us, collaborating with us, to make health care sustainable in this community, understanding that we all have a piece of this puzzle, and we're making great progress. And so what I'd like to do today is talk to you about the progress we've made since December. I know it's been about eight months since we've had a Town Hall meeting, offer insights into the success of what we've done since May 1st, when we became an independent institution, and that means, means we became independent of Trinity Health System. So it's been May, June, July, August, I guess we're in month four, and I can tell you, transitioning from being part of a national health system to being part of a regional system makes a whole lot of sense, and so it's, it's been good. The medical staff has been tremendous since May 1st in keeping us on task and making sure we're moving in the right direction, and without their counsel, I don't think we'd be where we are as fast as, as we have been. And Ray, thank you for your leadership as well. So here's what's happened in the last eight months since we last met. The first one is, we did successfully separate from Trinity at the end of April, and you might say, "Well, what does that mean?" And really, the long and short of it, that means that allowed us to start with a fresh start. Clean our balance sheet, we had no more debt, they took care of all of that. That was over, almost $20 million. So many organizations don't have the ability to start fresh with a clean slate and just get rid of the debt from the past, so that happened there. We became independent on May 1st, and then towards the end of May, early June, we introduced university and nursing and medical staff leadership to the team, and they've been with us on an interim basis. We had a CMO and a Chief Nursing Officer with us. They had agreed to be here for a couple of years through our transition, but they'd made really long commutes for two years, and had said, you know, "We'll stay with you through the transition, but we really want to go home eventually." So we're very thankful to the University of Rochester Medical Center for providing us interim leadership as we transition going forward. We did sign a letter of intent with the University of Rochester to explore an affiliation, and that happened in June. So we continue moving forward. We also received a Rural Health Care Access Grant to expand our emergency services, very good news. We've done a lot of recruiting providers, we did add a new provider for behavioral health services to the team. We signed an administrative agreement with the university, so they've been on site weekly helping us with nursing, our transformation plan, collaborating with New York State, helping us with joint commission preparedness. And their team, they have departments that are probably as big as our hospital, and so they can help us with construction management and things like that as it relates to our new facility. And then a new pathologist joined our team in June, Dr. Pecos, and she's here with us as well in the second row. Nice to see you. Oak Orchard, I know we've talked about Oak Orchard a couple times, and they specialize in primary care, pediatrics, dental, and Jim Cummings, I think you spoke in, was it December? And so since then, we've gotten some great news, and they were awarded a new access point grant, which is actually from the federal government, and I will thank Congressman Reed's team for helping, I know they made calls probably week after week after week for a long time, helping provide the funding we need for them to open up a site here in Hornell. So you'll be seeing that transition happen in September. In August, I know this is a lot to follow, but Post-Acute Partners did get the approvals they needed from New York State to move forward with the transaction to buy our nursing home, and so that transition is also expected to continue forward this year. So when you think about what can you get at St. James, what could you get here before we separated from Trinity, and what can you get here now? And the intent of this slide is to show you that almost all of the Xs are still there. So, you know, maternity is the one that we do not have today. I know it was very sad for us, and it's still hard, but that being said, we were able to preserve most of the list that you see here, and all the Xs are there, we're still open, we're still providing services. So what is next? We have been working on a gigantic multi-transformation plan that is due to the state. That plan connects an awful lot of dots. So how are we, St. James, going to work with other providers in the region? And then how does that, how does that grow from there? So you have many providers, I've introduced many of them to you this evening, that is what the state wants to see. We are an early success story for them because we are showing that it can be done with many providers working together. So these providers were all working together, many of us are working with the University of Rochester Medical Center. There's a larger group working on New York State reform called the Finger Leaks PPS, and they're working within 14 counties. And in this big plan we had to put together, we had to connect all those dots. And you say, "Well, what does that mean?" And what that means is that's our path to showing the state that we are on the right track, that we're going to make this transition work, health care is going to be sustainable in Hornell, and that's the foundation for the funding we need to continue operating and build our new facility. The, in terms of next, next steps, in terms of recruiting nurses, we did see a lot of transition of nursing staff and other staff as part of this big transformation. People got nervous, scared, saying, "Gosh, I wonder what's going to happen." And I can tell you, that has almost turned around. If I could, I think we have 64 resumes right now for nursing. I mean, we have been recruiting so much, you can't believe it. And so people are now coming back, our volumes on the inpatient units have doubled in the last month, and services are really on the uptick. So I think we should be proud of that, the work this community has done is paying off. So thank you very, very much for your support. In terms of the transition of some of the services to our new vision providers, we anticipate transitions of pediatrics and addiction services in September, so within the next 30 to 60 days there. Finalize our sale of the McCauley Manor to Post-Acute, and to the dialysis service line to Fresenius, we also anticipate to happen this year, and continue working towards our affiliation with the University of Rochester Medical Center. So with that, those are the administrative updates, and probably not nearly as exciting as the clinical updates. And so Dr. Mayewski, our interim Chief Medical Officer, is here to share those with you, and I think you'll find him to be a dynamic speaker. He's actually been with us since June 1st. He currently serves as Vice President and is the Chief Medical Officer of both Strong Memorial Hospital and Highland Hospital. He's certified in internal medicine and pulmonary medicine, he's a fellow of the American College of Physicians. He maintains on top of all of that, an active practice in Rochester, and he's been working very closely with our medical staff since his arrival, and I can say, please join me in welcoming Dr. Mayewski.
Thank you. Very, very happy to be here, and the introduction reminds me of what my father used to say, is that titles are, are easy to say, but it's what you do that counts. So basically, I'm here to tell you what I do, and I'm here to tell you a little bit about how things evolve at your hospital. And first, let me tell you a little bit about what a Chief Medical Officer does. Most people don't know what a Chief Medical Officer does. I'm not sure I've ever had a job description, but it's an easy job description to tell you. I have only one job, no matter where I go, and that's patient safety. I have no other job. My job is to make certain that what the hospital provides for patients and for its customers is a safe and high-quality care. Everything emanates from that. So everything that I do as a Chief Medical Officer stems from the fact that I have you as my constituents, as my number one customer, to say, "What are you, what are we doing to make the care safe? What are we doing to make the care the best we possibly can?" And so I don't, I won't tell you what else we do, because everything else pales in comparison in importance to that. So let me just advance the slides a little bit. I'll look here. So in coming down here, the first question I was asking myself, "Well, what am I going to do?" So I'm going to meet with the medical staff and talk with them. The first thing I'm going to do is just listen, is just listen to what people had to say. Listen to the providers, the nurses, the doctors, the technicians, the administrators. So what are your issues? I came in, I asked every one of these people that I talked with the first question. One of the most important issues were your patients. Most of them have been taking care of patients in this facility, living in this community for decades, and I know this community far better than I have or ever will. So it was interesting for me to find out what it is about taking care of patients that's important, and what do I need to know, and how can we make that continue? The second thing I wanted to do was to establish good lines of communication between the Administration and the medical staff. If there's one issue that is basically a biggest problem in many of the facilities I've ever seen them work, it's the failure of communication, one, one group to the other, it's the failure to bring people into the tent and understand what's going on. Not like the mayor said earlier, it's not always that people agree, but people should be able to hear each other what we have to say and move forward with every, every opportunity for what people think about. And that's what, what I was trying to do as well. And in the process, those two things would then create a process to restore and revive the hospital, in terms of, make it as great of a facility as we possibly can, and to move forward. And my vision has always been to move forward, not to look at the back. What's happened before is how can we make things moving forward the best that we can? And, and so basically, attaining financial stability and sustainability, while I'm a doctor, I usually do the opposite. Doctors are not great business people. So we allow the administrative staff and others to take the lead when it comes to doing that. And so our job is to try to make the, the facility, the clinical care, the safety and the quality the best it possibly can. And I can tell you that the good news is that when I talk to the medical staff, the physicians, the nurses, the technicians, everyone having to do with things, you have a great number of talented, dedicated people who want to do the same thing. And so my job is easy, my job is getting them all in the room and trying to get them all going in the same direction, that they have the same purpose in mind. So the best news you're going to hear tonight is, your medical staff that's here is dedicated, is high-quality, and it's moving us in the direction that we want to move to, to make this a great facility. So critical starting points, critical starting points. So you can't read the red, I guess I'm colorblind, so it's hard for me to read it as well. So I came down here and I basically saw the signs that said, "Save our Hospital," and so what you're going to hear from me tonight is, "Don't say that again, use the hospital." Because the hospital's at a point now where the quality of care moving forward, the services that are being provided, the, the atmosphere, you need to take advantage of that facility when you have to. It's a great asset to have a great facility like that in your community, and so we intend to continue to make it the best we possibly can. We want to restore what's vital and basic, the clinical services, and I'll get to what that is, and some criteria, we did a number of things. The first thing I listened to was one of the physicians here at the, at Dr. Collins. Dr. Collins, who's been here a few more years than I have, basically said that you're not going to have a viable hospital until some critical services are established, so that the citizens of the city know that we can provide those services 24/7. And you know, he's absolutely correct, and we've been trying to do exactly that, restoring some critical services, and you'll hear about those, and one of, one of those is surgery. So what we can say is, is that that's a critical service, and there are many others. So listening to the staff that tell you what it is that's important, and our job is to try to put that into perspective. Establishing criteria for how we get patients through the emergency room. Most hospitals these days, patients are admitted through the emergency room. At Strong, we have, I don't know, 100,000 people coming through the emergency room, the bulk of the admissions come through the emergency room, same thing here. And so it's important that as we look at the emergency room, we talk with them, how do patients get admitted, what are their criteria, and we've been busy talking with the, with the hospitalists, and I see Dr. Randauk Tariq is here, and Dr. Ropsha in the emergency room, trying to pound out and get through, what is it that, how can we make certain the right kind of people come into this facility that we can care for and get them taken care of? Very important, and we've come a long way in trying to make that happen. And recruiting physicians for needing consultative services. And that has been another question, and I've gone around asking the physicians in their offices, "So what kind of services do you need in this community to provide the kind of care you think we need to provide?" And they've given me a list of these kinds of things, and we've tried to fill those lists. We're fortunate to have many physicians who already come down here and provide great services, like Dr. Pilcher, who's been coming down here for decades, providing great consultative services in neurosurgery. And we'd like to be able to also get others to do the same thing, that can do the same thing in the high quality that he does. We try to engage the primary care community. Hospitals totally depend on primary care physicians, that's where the patients come from. And so getting primary care, listening to what their issues are, and where they are in the facility is an extremely important thing to do, and we've taken the time to talk to many of the primary care physicians to find out their issues, what are their needs, and what do we have to do to get to where we have to go. So we assist in planning for the future and creating the financial plans to strengthen it again. The financial plans, I leave to the people who actually know about finances and administrative issues, and those are my colleagues that you see on, on the stage and in the audience. So what are some of the clinical services that have been provided, what are the things that have occurred? Well, I can tell you that we have begun and will have in September, a full 24/7 surgical service that will be able to do surgery at St. James Hospital, the kind of surgery that you ought to be able to do at a hospital like this, 24/7. I will tell you that we already have Dr. Pilcher providing neurosurgery consultations. Another, at need for many of the individuals were vascular surgery. Vascular surgeons are surgeons who specialize in blood vessels, and they, they do many things with providing access to people with kidney disease, freeing obstructions when there's an obstruction, and there are clots in a blood vessel, and they do a lot of very vital things. Well, one of the Chief of Services of Strong, his name is Mike Stoner, has agreed to come down here and provide those services here, and I think that'll be a great asset to many of the needs that the citizens have in this community and the surroundings. Consultation services, I talked today to Tom Stuber, many of you may know Dr. Stuber, he's been providing cardiology consultative services with Mark Kanger for the last 10 years, and he is now in our, coming to our camp, and will continue to provide those services, and he's very anxious to continue with those, and I talked to him today, he would have been here tonight, but he has office hours, he had 38 patients in his office, I don't suspect he's going to come here in any time soon, although he may be flying in anytime, but. So it's a great asset to have Tom. Tom was a chief resident when I was a young faculty member at the university, so we helped train Tom, and he's a great guy, and he'll continue to provide services. So I want to talk to the pediatricians in this community. I said, "Tell me the number one thing that you need to provide," and they all said the same thing. They said, "We need adolescent psychiatry." Very, very important. The university is providing a new service this fall called telepsychiatry, and telepsychiatry, where they'd be able, psychiatrists, psychologists, through secure lines, being able to provide psychiatric consultation for people get this facility. We've already had discussions with them, and they will be in a position to provide such, such care when their service is up and running, which will be later this fall. You've heard about the fact of experienced nursing in mid-levels. As much as we need all the clinical physicians, the most important asset that we need at this hospital are the nurses. The nurses provide all the care, the physicians help direct that care, help in many ways, but without nurses, nothing gets done. And we all know that, that I've been in the business for a long time, is nurses bear the basis of care. For example, intensive care. People said that there have been intensive care units here before in the past, and how can we restore that? So what makes a bed an intensive care bed versus a bed that's a normal bed? Nurses. An intensive care bed, nurses nurse that bed 17 hours out of 24. That means when there's a patient in a bed where a nurse will be specifically for that patient 17 hours out of 24, that's an intensive care bed. However it looks, whatever it does, it's intensive care. It's all about nursing. Intensive care, regular care. So recruiting experienced nurses to help provide the care and the safety to take care of patients is extremely important, and that has been a very, that has been the highest priority that we've provided. You've heard about our lab director, and basically went through not only a successful joint commission survey, but one with very acumen and accolades, that we do a great job, not a good job, but a great job here. And that's to a lot of people's efforts, and I think that'll continue. We will surely have another joint commission survey coming our way in another month or so. We really look forward to those things, but, but it is one of those things that occur every two or three years, and it helps us kind of provide a benchmark on where we are. So we look forward to it. So what's next? Because these, these, these kinds of things never end, there should always be a progress, we'll never get to where we want to be, we will always get moving in the right direction. It's kind of like my golf score, it's always about moving the ball ahead. My score never gets to be exactly where it is, but I try hard every day. So what's, what's next? And again, some save your hospital to use your hospital. This hospital will be successful if you use it. So the success of this hospital will not only depend on the services we provide and the quality of care and the safety of care, but it'll, it'll depend on whether the people in this region feel good about that hospital and use it when they need to. And I can tell you, you should begin to think about that, and that's what will make this hospital continue to be great in the future as we move ahead. We're expanding our nursing staff, we'll continue to do that, filling the nursing staff, as you heard, we have 64 resumes. We want nurses that have some experience, so they can teach nurses that are new, and they become experienced, so then it becomes a continual kind of program. And we established some other specialties, so that we're going to make, make work. We talked about vascular surgery, pulmonary disease and gastroenterology are also two areas that are important to round out the care, and we're in active discussions with individuals to provide those care as well. Hopefully, we'll have some more discreet timelines on you to tell you about when, when that happens in the next month or so. And expanding surgery. I said earlier that, you know, there will be a surgical on call that's 24/7, but hospitals in general can't make it without a successful surgical program. They pay the bills. They are important to the citizens in the region that use them, because of the procedures that need to be done that are more urgent than some of the more medical procedures. And so expanding our surgical program, making certain that other types of surgeries, such as in orthopedic surgeons or other general surgeons. Surgeons don't live forever, and so as they get older, like the rest of us, we have to have a, a plan to help them continue to replenish what they need to do for our facility. So when I say expand surgical procedure, our surgeons, I mean to expand that, that's one of the bedrocks of this, of the hospital as well. And again, the other thing is to complete our affiliation with the medical center. We're happy and proud to be affiliated with you, and we need to get through the legal of the documents that it just takes that to have happen, so the banners can go out and the signs can go up, but basically, that's what we're in the process of doing. So we're very pleased to be here, helping you be your best. My job here is to basically help in that process. My job here is to assist what you already have, to kind of bring in some of the things that we've been told that is, would make what we need to do here, where we want it to be in terms of the safety and the quality of care. And it's actually been an enjoyable task, met some very interesting people that are very dedicated to this community and to this hospital, and I think that dedication is what spurred the rest of us on, who are down here helping. And so it's been our pleasure to do so. So with, I think I'll stop there, and we'll, we're happy to entertain any questions or any comments, or anything that you have in mind.
You know, before we begin the Q and A, I know there's many clinicians here, so if the physicians in the room could stand up, I think it's important to see how many are here and recognize them for their hard work, tremendous group of providers. And then we spent a lot of time talking about nurses and the clinicians, so I know we have a lot of our nurses, employees and clinicians here, if you could stand up too, I just want everyone to, to know you're here with us tonight as well. Thank you. Well, that will open up the floor to questions, and, you know, Ray and I will try to answer as many as we can, but I know we have many of the new vision providers and others here that can help us, and so Laura and Linda have the mics, whoever would like to go first. Whoever would like to go first. Oh, Laura, do you have the only mic?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you, Jen. With the partnership with U of R and St. James, was there a clause in it that a new hospital would be built contingent on the partnership going through? And that new hospital would be built in the Hornell area, nursing care area?
There is a plan to build a new facility. The answer to that is yes. Part of that is the state plan I was talking about, that multi-year transformation plan. And we need to obtain funding to build that funding, to build that building. So really, that's the next step, is to continue to secure the state's support. It's a pretty expensive building, and we're going to need a lot of the dollars that have been placed aside for healthcare reform and transition for that. So the plan is yes, to build a facility. The site we're still looking at is the one in North Hornell next to the nursing home. And the reason we're looking at that is we're trying to create a medical village where all the services we provide are on one campus. And then when you have everything on one campus, it makes it work better when you're handing off from one provider to another. How often have you gone to one type of physician, and then you have to go to another type, et cetera? It's easier for them to collaborate and for them to work the handoffs if we're all in one place working together. I don't know, Steve, if you'd like to add to that, please?
Thank you. Good evening. Steve Goldstein, I'm the president and CEO at Strong and Highland. I actually work with our regional hospitals, which now includes FF Thompson. We're working with a joint venture with St. Joseph's in Syracuse for Auburn Hospital, and have a number of other, we're also managing Wyoming Hospital through some of their difficulties as well. So we've had, over the last six months to a year, just enormous amount of involvement in what is a really changing healthcare scene in New York State. You know, the last time I had a chance to talk with you was at our last town hall meeting, and we talked about the fact that there were 207 hospitals in New York State, and 42 of them were on what was called the watch list. And I wanted to just remind myself, as I listened to the conversation, that not a lot of that has changed. We find in New York State, numbers of hospitals that have gone through the same, maybe not as difficult, but some of the same trials and tribulations that you have. And we are working very closely with the Department of Health to try and figure out how to bring services together to communities so that they can be sustainable over time. You know, at the end of the day, this is going to be about sustaining healthcare in Hornell. We're going to do it with partners. We're going to do it with Noyes and Centerville. We're going to do it with Jones and Wellsville. But the issue is, how do we create a construct so that you don't repeat this problem over time as healthcare financing changes? We don't expect in the future that we're going to be paid more. You know, we have this old saying, "You're never going to be paid better than you are being paid today in healthcare." And we know that the cost of healthcare is dramatic for our country, a real burden for our citizens, and that we have to create efficiency. And so what we've been, we've been really working about is, number one, how to work with the board, how to work with the Department of Health, how to use the incredible resources that you have in terms of advocacy. I can't, I can't say enough about Mayor Hogan and his leadership, Congressman Reed's office, Senator Schumer's office, Senator Slaughter's, or Congressman Slaughter's office. They've all been calling us continuously to find out, when are things happening? What is happening? How can we help? And I would recognize the fact that Congressman Reed's office is representative, and they have been incredibly active. I do remember, we spent about 60 hours during the beginning, the first of the year, New Year's Eve time, really going over the finances of the institution, what needed to be done to turn it around. Well, you know, I can say that we still have a lot of work to do, and the board has been really terrific in understanding the reality of the fact that you've gone from 116 beds down to potentially around 15, some days less than that. We have to build ambulatory programs, outpatient programs, as Ray has indicated. We really have to have a stable inpatient program in order to create the critical mass that will allow us to have sustainable healthcare in Hornell. Now, we need partners to do that. We need the Department of Health. You have an older facility, and it's very inefficient. And we are trying to figure out, given all the problems that, and all the opportunities that we've gone through, how do we transition that? So we have been working with the Department of Health, put in an application for an ambulatory center that also includes a number of inpatient beds. That's yet to be approved. No projects yet have been approved, and we're working through that process. And we would anticipate that that's going to take a number of months, and I can guarantee, I've been, I've actually been in the state, in New York. I've worked in Nebraska, and in Ohio, and in St. Louis with the University of Nebraska for numbers of years. And I've been in the state now 34 years, my 34th year, and I can guarantee you that we will not be able to put in an application to the state that will not generate some questions, review, and potentially over time, some changes. But I know the state is enormously interested in preserving healthcare in Hornell, and has been very excited, and I, for the most part, really wanted to emphasize, has been very excited about the potential of bringing resources from three communities together to try and figure out, how are we going to sustain healthcare within all three communities over time? And I will tell you that our efforts, first is around stability, then is around what do we need from a facility point of view. But the most difficult issue that we face, you know, it's very easy to compete, and it's very hard to collaborate. And I spend my life, right now, in doing both. I'm competing with some institutions, and I'm collaborating with a whole bunch of others. We have to collaborate with insurance programs, and we have to collaborate with FQACs. Oak Orchard has been incredibly supportive, and has taken enormous risks to come to the community, and then we're benefited by a terrific grant that Congressman Reed's office really helped facilitate. And so we're watching the pieces that the board, and the mayor, and Jen have been able to bring together, but our work is far from done. We need to have a financially stable platform, which means that we're going to be spending the next couple of months, the next three, four months, really going through that and trying to make the decisions necessary to make sure that that happens. And then over time, we need to develop the regional focus that allows us to bring new services and new programs, share those amongst the various communities, so that all the communities are elevated in their healthcare, and we can help transition the communities to the next phase of healthcare, which will be much more regulatory-based, much more population-focused, much more intertwined with providers around their quality issues and what they need from their institutions, as well as our third parties and insurance carriers. So from my vantage point, what we are seeing now is just a lot of things that we would have expected. There's been a lot of conversation over the last few months, what are we going to have? What do we need? What do we think we need? And I can guarantee you that we don't know all those answers. But I can also guarantee you that as I talk to Amy at Nicholas Noyes Institution in Danville, and I talk to Eve Liebeneck at Jones Memorial, there is a real commitment, and I talk to the Department of Health, there is a real commitment to make sense of not of competing communities, who's part of that competition, gotten where we are, but cooperative communities. Because it's through cooperation that we believe we're going to be able to provide and elevate healthcare for all of the communities. That is going to be an interesting process. We're going to involve all the medical staff, and we have to involve the boards, and we have to involve the communities. But at the end of the day, what we have, five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years down the road, is sustainable healthcare for communities. Because we're convinced, we're absolutely convinced, that the historic models of competition between communities, particularly in communities that abut each other, and while it seems that the communities are far apart, from a geographic point of view, and they're not as far apart as many other communities, but communities that abut each other, how do they work together at all levels to bring the resources necessary to take care of populations? Frankly, that's what the university is involved in. We're big acute care facilities for sure, but we are now putting in place programs to try and understand how we can manage, assist, and facilitate and support populations of health getting their healthcare from local communities. One of the issues that Ray didn't mention is that we're very, one of the reasons we want to bring practitioners here from other communities is we want to see as many patients not go to Rochester or Franklin to us if they can be provided services here. It's better for families, it's better for your community. And to be very blunt, Strong Memorial, which is 860 beds right now, we're talking about doing some expansion, is over 100% occupied. It is, we are assuming, we're planning now for the next few years of occupancy, we are assuming that we're going to be able to push, on the average, 25, 30 patients that are inpatients in our institution back to local communities, whether it's in Cannavale, whether it's here, whether it's in Danville, whether it's in Wellsville, wherever that might be. Our goal is to push as many patients safely and appropriately back to local communities where it's much easier for them to facilitate that care. So tonight is, you know, is an important thing. Jen has given you a great overview of progress. Ray has done what Ray does best, which is really talk about how to bring a medical staff. Ray and I have actually worked together for 20 years, and other than when he's yelled at me about my weight, we've had infrequent arguments. And he's my internist, so I gotta be careful what I say. And he's an internist of so many. But at any rate, our focus now is going to be around fiscal, being able to stand in your own confidence, make sure that that works over time, make sure that the partnership with Danville and Jones are meaningful to all the parties. This is the most difficult aspect of collaboration. How do you work together so that it's meaningful to all parties and all boats for us? And that's really our focus. Ray and I and Jen this morning spent a lot of conversation around certain kinds of services, and how does it impact all three communities? How can we provide it so that all three communities are strengthened in their healthcare? So again, what you're going to hear from us continuously is that we're interested in the region, we're interested in you, we're bringing our resources there to try and make that happen. We're going to be very sensitive about trying to work with all the communities, that's our responsibility. We're going to listen. We listen to your board, we listen to the mayor, we listen to you, and we listen very much, very much, to the medical staff and to the employees. But we really believe that this is not just an effort for Hornell, but it's an effort for all your surrounding communities. And at the end of the day, what can result, and we're focused around trying to make sure that that does happen, is that everyone has better care as a result of their association with each other. So we'll stop there. Yes?
A question for Dr. Mayoski.
Yes.
There's been a lot of, a lot of nice things that have been talked about tonight that are coming back, and you're exploring what other services we need. But in your discussions, has there been any discussion about mental health services? We had an inpatient adolescent and adult psych units here for a number of years that served a great purpose. They're gone. And to the CEO's comments about the effect of services on families, that they've got to go someplace else for those services, assessments and things, I wonder if any of that may be coming back or the discussion around those services?
Yes, there has been. In fact, I think I said earlier that on the top of the list of several people, when I said, "Well, providers," their number one item had to do with mental health or psychiatric services. I think it's fair to say, having practiced in our region for 30, 40 years, mental health, outpatient mental health services being scarce is not unique to Hornell. And in fact, it's occurring in Rochester as well. Getting good mental health services, continuity mental health services in the communities is a very difficult thing to do. And so we've had a lot of discussion in terms of how do we make this work? That's why one of the issues that we started to talk about was even using the telepsychiatry, which doesn't make the answer to everything, but at least is expanding the ability for psychiatrists and other health, mental health providers to come in this direction. And so this has been on the list as an important item. And important, I know because of your past history here as well, but also important because it's one service, whereas a primary care provider, it's a very difficult service to secure from the many patients. And it's a very, very important service for many of our patients who we see. Many of the primary care patients that I see have significant mental health issues that need care, and not only on the outpatient areas, in the outpatient areas primarily. So the answer is yes. I wish I could give you a solution for all that we need right now, but I can tell you this is one of the things that is hot on the list, both to recruit outpatient providers in psychiatry and behavioral health that will be able to expand into the region, as well as developing other regional services. And there are many services that go far beyond just addictive services or services for severely mentally handicapped, but the other type of services as well. So we're trying, but it's an extremely important and difficult thing to do. The first headway is the telepsychiatry service, which is a brand-new service that the university provides to do outreach at hospitals primarily or other facilities. And I say, at least that's a start, and hopefully that will get the ball rolling.
It seems like we talked about everything except maternity services, and they're one of our most vulnerable populations that we have here. You know, last night in the paper, they talked about one of the reasons that we don't have it anymore is because our census has decreased so much. But in truth, our census decreased because our moms were told, and our providers, we had four providers that were very willing to stay here, were told that, you know, it's not feasible, because we work where you have inpatient beds, and that can be 24/7 surgery services, which are necessary for maternity. Now, most of those have been restored, but I don't know if we can talk about this maternity or where it's going to be, you know, where that stands.
Well, as Jen said earlier on, our first, while everybody recognizes, and it hurts not to have a service that you've had in OB, everybody recognizes that it would be nice to have those services, no question about it. Again, what I said earlier in my talk was that the most important thing for me is that we have a safe service and we provide safe care. Most facilities, most literature that you read, you have to get into the area of providing at least 400 deliveries or more to get into that category. And so we basically would have to get into that region and be able to provide safe services. But I think earlier, to begin with, the first thing we're trying to do is first provide this kind of services to be able to get to that point as well in the future. Right now, I haven't addressed the issue of OB care. I've addressed the issue of the other things that I've mentioned. And, but again, in the future, that's an issue that has been recognized during the community and should be looked at. But right now, I can't tell you that there's a plan to bring OB back right at this moment, to be very honest with you. But I can tell you that it won't be something that could be done in the future as well.
Joan, I'll add to that as well. We still will provide prenatal, postnatal care. If there's an emergency, certainly St. James can take care of you. And we're looking, again, this is an area of collaboration among the three communities to work together for the inpatient delivery component. But the outpatient maternity, obviously, services are here, and then we're continuing to have GYN services in the clinics and GYN surgeries, et cetera. So it's not the entire spectrum, but we're doing our best with what we can momentarily.
Who's doing GYN?
We have many providers in town doing GYN. Dr. Rupert is in town, Dr. Bonvino's group, so...
But that surgery?
We're working on the surgery component right now. So I can't say that every piece is fixed yet, but we're actually working very hard to make that happen. So stay tuned and soon. So stay tuned and, and soon.
I'm wondering if in the plans for the new facility, is it going to be such that you can build on? For instance, an adolescent psych unit added on later or a maternity unit? Or is it just set to one simple facility?
Um, it's not simple. It's, it's, it's a couple stories, but, um, yes, one of the things that you look at when you're, you're building or planning for a new facility is what you think your future needs may be and how you can design it to account for that. So that will absolutely be a consideration as part of that. Now, you know, in terms of the plans we need to give to the state, you have to work on architectural drawings, schematic drawings, all that kind of stuff comes together then, but, uh, makes a lot of sense.
Oak Orchard was relying on federal funding to come here. Do they have to reapply every year for that funding?
Um, they do not have to reapply every year, but I'm going to have Jim Cummings from Oak Orchard answer that for me. He's more familiar.
We do have to reapply. We do that, uh, every three years, I believe. We'll actually be coming up for that application in 16. We're presently funded for the operation here through the end of 16. We'll make application in June, July timeframe next year and then we'll be granted for three years.
In the event that funding in the future doesn't come to fruition, would you still make the commitment to Hornell?
Yes. I mean, I, we were making the commitment to Hornell before the grant came through and, you know, with some significant efforts. As mentioned, Congressman Reed's office is very helpful in getting that grant. But we were coming and we think that, uh, there can be a viable practice here and we're now looking at dental services, which we also do, and, and starting to plan for that implementation. And we think when we put it all together, uh, we can make it go. Um, but also, Oak Orchard, I can tell you, has been funded under the 330 grant for 35 years. So, uh, you know, we have very regularly reapplied and been reapproved.
Thank you.
It's, uh, very rewarding to hear what's being said to them. Now, I think, uh, as you stated, it's time for the community to pull back together, use St. James, because community, and when you would sit at the local clubs and so on, comments that were made about what was were very, very negative. Uh, and what I'm hearing now, as someone who was an attending physician for 28 of St. James 125 years, I want to say, let's all get together. And, uh, I like what I'm hearing and I think you're going to do us a great job. Thank you.
To get along with what he's saying, how are we going to get it out to people other than in this room to use this hospital? I mean, that's got to be an ongoing sell in the paper, going to the communities?
It is. That's a, that's a great question. And we're working on an integrated communications plan and we have many communications folks in the room. I'm not sure of Chris or Sylvia or Julie, who would like to help me with that one? Chris?
Yeah?
Did you hear the question?
I did, yeah. Hi. Good afternoon, good evening. My name's Chris Lookatch. I'm a communications consultant working with St. James and I will say that, uh, it's very much a priority to be helping to take this message, uh, however nuanced the message it is, out to the community and making sure that, um, uh, we're, we're having confidence in the services. Um, a big obligation, a big part of that obligation is on us as the communicators to take all these well-constructed messages and whatnot from, uh, from the folks on the podium and make sure that, that that's being out there. But a big part of the onus and a big part of the responsibility is on, uh, the people in this room. People look to their friends, they look to their family members to make their healthcare decisions. They're built, they build their confidence in their healthcare decisions from their neighbors, uh, from the people that use the services and it, it grows and flows out from there. So, uh, we at the, at the hospital level will do everything we can to support that effort. Uh, we will, uh, continue to support the word of mouth effort, but, um, uh, it's, it's really going to be, uh, we hope, you know, in addition to our efforts, uh, one that is organic and one that builds and grows. And, and we're very much encouraged to hear all the nice things being said and, um, we look forward to more, uh, discussions along these lines and, and, uh, more efforts, uh, in the newspaper, out in public, in the hospital and, and so on. Thank you.
Dr. Meyer?
I, I don't have a question. I just have a comment to make. Um, I, for one, I'm very, very glad that we're going to have telepsych because adolescent psych is a huge problem. We all deal with depression and anxiety and I don't think there's a person in this room who hasn't dealt with, um, suicide or suicide attempts. And unfortunately, it's huge in our area. And bringing telepsych is, is wonderful. And I don't think the community should shy because just, because it is telepsych, you don't have a person in front of you. It is still found to be very, very successful. And very few communities are able to bring any psychiatry or even telepsych to the area. So I'm very thankful.
I don't have a question either, just a comment. Uh, you mentioned getting it out, people to use the hospital. If the services are provided at the hospital, it's easy. I mean, we, we come here, but so often in the recent past, we've been shipped out. Rochester, Chatham, or somewhere because the services aren't here. So the services are here, the people will come and they will stay.
Well, thank you so much for, for being here tonight. We appreciate your, your support and we look forward to more good news. And, uh, if you have any questions, we'll be here for a little bit afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.